Hey, everybody. Very nice to see all of you. September 1st, 1991, Chapter 9 of the laws of 1991 required that the informed person who loved and students attend meetings within a school of appropriate procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, there are two exits with signs. You may exit through the double doors at the north end of the building or the double doors at the east end of the building. I would like to thank our principal and staff and PTA for the wonderful snacks and beautiful decorations this evening and for hosting us. So, the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on October 13th, 2021, as detailed in Friday mail. Do you mind, Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Ed... No, the Board of Education, I'm sorry. Acknowledges receipt of the Treasury report for September 2021, as detailed in Friday mail. Do you mind, Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will now turn it over to the superintendent. This is Paul. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Paul Chero. That's something for us.
Looking for the right words to capture the moment that we're in, while trying to organize the podcast. But then it came to me this week as I walked through even rehearsals, and three of the advisors there had all said a version of the same thing, and it was this statement, roughly. You know, watching the kids so happy is really changing my perspective. Each of the advisors said a version of that because, for obvious reasons, things are not quite normal here, and we're working in silos. Our cast is practicing all we would need, on and on and on. But what this staff sort of realized all in that one night is that our students and our production is sort of starting to transcend the challenges and the dramas that go along with any production, but particularly one year. And that joy and excitement is so meaningful for the students because it's sort of like therapy for their young souls. This production is so much more than music, so much more than artistic process. It's spilling over onto the dinner table, wonderful conversations at home and families in the weekends, households are happy, and I'm really proud that they will have a moment to share their hardest, our hardest feeling with and with, which is lovely. So, I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Kennedy, for always playing, going to follow us. And I'm going to turn the program over to our students, who are going to present a small preview of the wedding singer, and they're going to perform for you today, "It's Your Wedding."
We just have one more round for which was... This is the first line that we're in, having the theme of love is what we do. That is a good message involved. I would like to introduce tonight, Mr. Ramirez, who is going to present on our physical and health education program. What we do every, like, six-year cycle is we identify each year one or two or three different content areas of the community on what our program is and shape into the curriculum, what the cycle looks like. And so, this year, Mr. Ramirez won the cause, and he is going to be presenting on physical and health. So, Mr. Ramirez.
Could you hear me? Can you hear me? First of all, I just want to say thanks for allowing me to share what we do, our physical and health curriculum. I want to thank Dr. Kennedy for always putting behind the student presentation. It seems like I was all behind it. So, I'm here to present our...
You can say your presentation.
Mmm. I couldn't say it in the first place. So, I'm here to present our physical and health education curriculum and what we do of eight, twelve, and both with physical education. So, our first idea... Our first idea is really any great curriculum, good curriculum, starts with objectives and standards. So, these are the standards that we have for our curriculum. They outline character-based and behavior-based objectives for physical and health education and focus on student outcomes. This next slide is the six standards of New York State's learning standards. Last time I presented, the New York State learning standards were three. They dipped these up. They're now six, but they focus on psych motor, the doing cognitive, the knowledge of how they do it, and the effect of the social behaviors component, the physical and health. So, what you see here is our elementary, our elementary curriculum by grade and what units we work. So, you can see kindergarten, first grade, second grade. What we focus on is a lot of movement skills, manipulative skills, and fitness concepts. So, in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, a little more difficult, more challenges, start combining those movements and fitness skills together. This slide here shows you some of the co-curricular activities that we do that reinforce what we do during the ZED. We have our fitness jam for read, our basketball shootout, the all elementary activity, our unit day at the end of the year, our wood retracting, and our challenging for adaptive students at physical school. So, once the students get to the middle school level, we start to evolve in terms of using those movements, those fitness concepts, the manipulative skills, and start putting it more competitive and lifelong fitness activity kind of scheme. You'll see here when they get to middle school, students are exposed to, they get an option of team sport or a fitness sequence. I highlight something about one of our newer units this year, red, which is Tai Chi. We can try to start including a little newer type of unit. This is one, so I'm excited to see. Mr. Robinson will lead that at the middle school program. So, once the students get to the high school, the split is to form a game atmosphere and put in all the skills they picked up at the elementary concept, put them together and use them in a competitive team sport atmosphere. The students take a choice between a team sport sequence of units or leisure activities, lifelong activities, depending on their interest level. And our freshmen take intro PE, which is a shorter, shorter unit, where we expose it for all our units. Again, at the high school, you'll see in red, we have some new units, another team sport. We're going to try to track the field this year, and the leisure activities, we're going to incorporate a week-long unit, self-defense, and in the spring, March. So, we're excited. For our intro PE sequence, we started yoga, we started that two years ago for grade, it's loving, and this year, we're including the frisbee ball. So, our adaptive PE program is geared to our students who have physical challenges, emotional behavioral challenges, and basically what we do is we modify the physical program for them to meet their needs. Therefore, they take all the activities that our general students take, we just modify the activities to their level. At the high school, these students end their year, just like elementary students, participating at the challenging games in Mitchell Field. So, a lot of fitness concepts, fitness activities that we get up to help them in that event. This is our middle school adaptive class, and you'll see, I just like to be honest, I was up there by the line. On the left, you'll see they're doing activities, the hula hoops, and those are movement skills, how to move around, through, and over the hula hoop, and then incorporate some drawings and some, some of the stuff that they're doing in class to reinforce. Two offerings, of course, offering that we got, and I'm extremely proud of. First one is in physical, is our officiating course. We're the only school on Long Island that currently offers this, and one of the, I think, maybe one of two, if not one, in New York State, which is basically students at the high school, upper 12th grade, take a happier course for officiating. We send our teachers out to Bosse's. They get certified as officials, sport officials. They come back and they teach those, those sports officiating rules, concepts for our students to go then and go to Bosse's. Once they complete our class, sit to take the test and get certified themselves so that they can officiate games at Bosse's level, whether it's varsity, JV, or where the youth programs can sell. So, they leave there with that ability to make some money over the summer. Currently, we offer stock term volleyball, and we're going to expand that. Put out a survey this spring for students to see what they're interested in. And the other one is our Michael's Health elective. This course is really to help students learn how to manage the stress that they deal with day in and day out. So, it teaches them to be in the moment and strategies that they can take with them to deal with stress and other things that go on in their life that they want, not only to school, but also to graduate. Both very popular courses. Here you see the Michael's class. There's a lot of yoga involved. They do some other activities in terms of nature walks, things to teach stress, live in the moment, and put aside some of that stuff that's constantly on their, on their heart. So, in terms of health, K through five, our students use the Great Body Shop, which is a national curriculum. You'll see here the standards for this curriculum. It is very detailed. Our teachers at the elementary school provide two hours of health, half hour a week. Each student gets a workbook every month. Grade level, depending on which month, is certain topics. The kids love it because obviously you look at it, it's colorful, it's engaging, but the information on here is very useful. It also has a component which is web-based, parents can pull on there, they might follow up there, some of their daughters going to school. On the left... So, what you're seeing with the Great Body Shop curriculum, which we use the upper hesitation curriculum, that is sequentially developmentally appropriate, culturally sensitive, and medically accurate. It is aligned with the National Health Education Standards, the National Sexuality Education Standards, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Characteristics, and Effect of Health Education Curriculum. We provide students, like I said, two hours a month. These are different units on the left that they're exposing, and this is K through five. Once students get into middle school, we have our own curriculum, which is developed with our teachers and allows us to meet the needs of our school community and modify every year depending on the different health issues or the different health concerns that come up. But they all, all our units revolve around five aspects, health, emotional, mental, spiritual, social, and physical health. The high school, similar, same concept, same focus, but our units expand and obviously especially the activities of those, those change, but they're geared to help students make wise choices in terms of how to live a healthy lifestyle, as well as understanding the consequences when you don't live a healthy lifestyle. These are some of the co-curricular activities that we have for middle school and high school. We have a student wellness committee to make knowledgeable consumers of family life, which is our introduction to health, reproductive, and hygiene at the elementary level. Our HPE educators at the high school and our staff program at the school. Students can start to consider. That is my presentation. Thank you. Our first physical newsletter, which was, I want to give credit to our, we want to shoot Mr. Mike Marrero, put that together, and we'll be putting that out at different times. We'll highlight some of the stuff that we present and... Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, I have a question in terms of the high school program as well as the team sport sequence, teacher, is it, are this, how's it laid out in terms of freshman year, sophomore year, or junior, senior?
So, freshman year, the students take all the introduction PE, which are the four units, they get exposure, but they'll shorter than that.
When you say units, are you speaking of the sequence?
So, the units are the actual activities. So, tennis would be a six-week unit, volleyball would be a six-week unit. When they take that sort of PE, they're three-week units, they're just an introduction to see what they, so they get exposed to everything. Then, then when they get to 10th, 11th, and 12th, they get to choose a sequence of units based on their interests. So, they can take four and a half, they can take team sports if they like competitive activities, or if they're looking for lifelong activities, they can take indoor activities, the golf.
So, they take that towards the end of freshman year, sophomore year, and so forth?
They get to take at the start of the year, and then at the midway point, they can switch over.
Thank you.
No problem.
The other question I've had, the body shop?
Pre-body shop?
Yes. So, they start body shop in kindergarten, or?
Yes, then health group is taken by.
Okay.
We, we, each student gets a workbook every month that gets sent, and the company was great about that, is obviously health is a, is an ever-changing topic, you know? So, with that, with a textbook, you find stuff with the textbook, the workbooks, they change from year to year, they're updated. So, each student gets their workbook that they work out of, and it's reinforced with, they have a web-based, web-based activities that they can engage on from home to support with this one in the classroom.
When is the body shop curriculum started at that point, at preschool?
Oh, when, when, right?
No, at one point. It didn't start September. I feel like it starts in the winter, the spring, May, or I think that part.
No, they should, they, they, they're all.
It's all good.
Yeah, there's just another question, Mr. Ramirez, on mindfulness course. Is that an established curriculum, or did you use a consultant to develop that curriculum in-house?
We, we sent one of our high school health workers out and some training workshops and developed a curriculum in-house based on those training.
Great, great, thank you.
One last question, sorry. We officiated course. How have it been around for what, three?
This is our second year.
Second year, and how has the response been on that?
It's very, very, we want to extend what we offer, like I said, right now, we offer soccer, playing volleyball, so they're going to expand after next year. Just to be honest, the train, the teachers have been a little bit of a challenge because that shutdown on there and some of the officiating training. So, once that is up and running with that, we'll hopefully include more sports.
I just want to answer that. So, there was a whole host of choices. Because we knew we couldn't offer all of them beginning, we surveyed the kids, find out which ones they were most interested in, and they took the two that they were most interested in, and that's where we started, and then COVID hit. And so, that definitely derailed some of that, but I can share that, that from not only across the county, but across the state, there's been inquiries from other places to find out about, about a lot of the things we do, but in this particular case, the officiating courses are things people are interested in learning more about, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. We'll zone with the answer finally. So, I'm going to go into CNN. The last thing, from my perspective, so we're just about getting into the budgeting process, and, well, that's incorrect, we are in the budgeting process, and there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes of the process that is important to know, and it's, it's an opportunity for the board to ask questions about the process. So, this is not about the 21, last year, the 22, 23 school year, that budget particularly. This is really about the budget process. So, how do we get to the point where we have something to present to the community, you know, what's involved in that process? So, this is an opportunity, I asked Dr. Robinson if he would explain sort of a behind-the-scenes look to the development of the public, in an effort for the board to be able to ask whatever questions they have, who comes with the background. So, I would turn it over to you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you very much. I have to admit, Mr. Ramirez, when you started in the middle of your presentation, you were talking about Tai Chi, and I heard Mr. Robinson's going to be doing that. I got a little nervous. I actually thawed, just to say, oh. So, the purpose of the budget, if we just go rewind just a few minutes, I've talked about the presentation Mr. Ramirez did, and then talk even 15 minutes before that, and look at the presentation and the performance that the students just did, I think that answers a lot of the questions. I would like to just throw it back to Dr. Kennedy, just for a moment, to go over some of the athletes. I wasn't going to go through them line by line, but if you wanted to add code commentary to it, or I'll just keep going. I can tell by the look of Justin.
Not any code commentary, I just know that Dallas, where parents will be dancing and singing, he'll be doing Tai Chi.
So, I, I do want to answer, I think, the broadest sector of the purpose of school budget, and these little mechanics demonstrate very clearly, it's all about student outcomes. That is the bottom line, and you can tell by just the accolades and the statistics that exists. The numbers are terrific, from the graduation rate to the number of people who stand taken to award-winning academic academies. Obviously, to the next people, it's a, who's ten world record best high school in the state championship. So, that really answers a very broad question, and it speaks to what the investment in public education really needs to be. So, we put together some slides just to review the process and the timeline, and it's really important to understand that our budget process is not just a few months, it's not a snapshot in time, it literally takes place throughout the year in a very cyclical nature. We don't develop a budget just for one year, we're really developing a budget to make sure that our public education system has sustainability for many years to come. So, that's something that I think people just generally take for granted, but it's a really big picture item that we have to be mindful of. So, we only include just a few key points. Yes, we're funding the operations for the subsequent year, but we have to build that sustainability. We have to make sure we mitigate risk for unknown factors. I'll name one that everybody is very familiar with, COVID. So, that really had an impact of about six and a half million dollars that this school district was able to manage just because of its fortified financial position. And the bottom line, all of this is really following the ten established by the Board of Education, Mission State. This is on the website, it's discussed by the board on an ongoing basis, and it really looks to support student academic, social, and moral growth, the foster lifelong to learn. I can guarantee you that some of the students you saw performing will be performing for years to come. I can guarantee you that some of the students that are participating in various different activities and physical education will be doing Tai Chi. I did Tai Chi when I was in high school. Admittedly, I don't anymore, but that will really... So, just looking at our timeline, June 13th, coming school is out, and really the business office gets to work. I want to just recognize Ms. Walsh here, Rachel here. She's our assistant business manager, really spearheads a lot of these activities in terms of us closing our books and preparing our year-end financials. And that takes place throughout the summer. And while it's also going on, we have our auditor steps, and then start to audit all of our books. That culminates in a year-end audit report, which has deadline on October 15th. The board just had an audit committee meeting last month, and we accepted the financials and year-end audit report. Uh, the board, uh, just had an audit committee meeting last month and, uh, we accepted the, uh, the financials and year-end audit report. And then right after that, we start looking at the budget development calendar for the subsequent year. That's the year we're in right now to actually prepare the budget for next year and the years to come. So just looking at that document, it's a, a pretty robust timeline of everything that has to take place from start to finish in order to culminate with the budget voting in there, which is indicated by that committed panel. So we are in the throes, as Dr. Kennedy pointed out, right now, of reviewing all of our details. Uh, our budget analysis looks at prior year reports, it looks at trend analysis, it looks at revenue and expense, um, forecasts. Uh, we're looking at some of the major cost drivers such as retirement system, health insurance, salaries, contractual obligations, and so on. Uh, we look at our economic conditions, you can tell just by reading the paper on any given day. It's up, it's down, the, the future is very uncertain. We have to take that into account as we're building a budget to sustain ourselves for years to come. Uh, we look at our collective bargaining agreements, we look at our capital plan. We have a five-year capital plan that looks at the entire facility and really trying to understand how we can fund improvements that we need to make for buildings that in many cases are over a hundred years old. Uh, we look at the, uh, either new or pending legislation, uh, interest rate forecasts, uh, the tax limit forecasting. You're all familiar with the tax cabinet legislation, so we're looking at that constantly. And the last point is very important to understand, recent legislation requiring transparency reporting. Uh, Ms. Walsh, her credit does a phenomenal job at really identifying every cost that exists to the building level. That's very important. And then we get into, how does that work with all of our departments and with our building leaders, each building principal? Uh, uh, right around this time, we've already, uh, sent out our instruction booklets. Uh, we've outlined all of the, uh, the details in terms of what's going to be required in the individual budgets that each department assembles for us to review. Uh, we go through that and really the cycle begins. So we'll start at the top, just the budget proposals. We had those meetings already set up with our building department, our department leaders and our building leaders. Uh, those initially come to the business office and we go through, again, the trend analysis, we look at all of those details. Uh, we consistently are looking at all of the major cost drivers, contractual obligations, and what is our strategic plan to make sure we can build that sustainability effort? And then we get to the point where each, uh, individual department head or, uh, building principal will meet with Dr. Kennedy, myself, and Ms. Walsh. And we review basically all of the proposals. That then goes to our patent and we do another final, we do, uh, I, I say final, but it's really an ongoing. It, it, you know, there's changes that are made all along the way. Uh, and what's critical to understand is this is an iterative process. It's not just, here's the proposal, okay, yes, and we move on. We go back to the drawing board, we see what fits, we see what makes sense, we see what the new demands are, we see what our enrollment looks like, we look at all of those factors. Uh, it's a perpetual cycle, um, where at the same time, looking at the status of the budget in harmony and how that's going to impact from a state aid perspective for our school mission. And this culminates in a final budget draft that ultimately goes to the Board of Education for them to have, uh, discussions and the, and budget workshops that are open. Right around the beginning of January, we're looking for what's called the governor's executive budget. That's the preliminary budget that the state puts out. And that's where we get our first glance of what state aid might look like and what our expense-driven aids might look like based on our financial performance year prior. Then back to the cycle and we go to our first budget work session this year scheduled for February ninth. And this is where the initial drafts are presented to the board for deliberation and for evaluation. Again, that's an ongoing process. There are questions that come up, there's, uh, issues that we go back to the drawing board on. Uh, again, an iterative process. On March first, we have a, a rock-solid headline to submit our tax levy cap calculation. Now, what's interesting in this process is, as you can tell by the timeline, we still haven't adopted a budget. We don't know what our finished budget is going to be. But one of the major components on the revenue side of our budget is the tax cap. We have to draw that line on the sand. So that presents a challenge because on the revenue side of our budget, there's two major buckets. And that's the tax levy cap or the tax levy and state aid. And there's pieces of that puzzle that we still don't fully understand yet based on what the state is delivering. We go back to the drawing board after we see that initial budget and we revise whatever needs to be revised. We reanalyze and we come back with the Board of Education and the budget work, work sessions in the beginning of March. Uh, right about the beginning of March, mid-March, um, what's called the legislative budget is that released. And that's after the state has done their deliberations for the New York State budget. Uh, they release that information and then we can have the opportunity to make potentially final tweaks to our own budget. The New York State budget, uh, adoption for the state is targeted at April first. You never really know if that's really going to be, uh, held to. In years past, it, it's been on a pretty good track record, so that's the timeline. Right there, our district clerk assembles all of the, if that's correct, uh, all of our legal notices and make sure that we're compliant with, uh, the regulations that are required in terms of how we, uh, announce, uh, our budget plans and the details associated with it. The Board of Education adopts the budget this year, it's scheduled for April sixth. And then on May fourth, we have what's called the budget hearing, which we review basically the final draft of what the proposed budget will be. And that leads up to the culminating event of the budget vote and trust the election this year. It's scheduled for, uh, May seventeen, two thousand, twenty-two. Sorry to believe that we'll really talk about that number all the time. So this is really just, uh, an overview of what the total budget looks like. We wanted to just break it down into the components. So if you took our total budget, you can see the line shares and salaries and benefits, right? These are major cost drivers for us. Um, transportation is a big slice. And then there's, uh, what's called non-salaried. So I don't want that to be confusing, it just represents a whole bunch of other little pieces, but it's twenty percent of our budget. Uh, this panel is very, very important. It leads to basically of that twenty percent, that's all of the components that drive that twelve percent. So it has to do with both these programs, special ed, our facilities needs, um, uh, some transfers to our other funds, uh, technology, uh, so, uh, tuition costs as well. We've seen quite, quite a significant increase in tuition costs, uh, for this year. So again, an important component is when we're developing the budget, there's actually two budgets we're developing. It's everything that represents our expenses, but it's everything that represents the revenues to support those expenses. And by New York State law, those two have to balance, they have to be there. It represents, uh, a challenge. Last year, we had some conversations about how things were going in the very beginning. It was a very different picture from New York State regarding the impact of COVID and so on. And that changed dramatically as the budget process, uh, continued on. So this is a slide that we took from last year's presentations. And if you recall from all of the budget presentations, you heard Dr. Kennedy talking about the iceberg and really understanding, uh, it's what's underneath that matters most. We heard a lot of things in the press about funding that was coming, funding that didn't exist, it was going to exist. Uh, we really have to look at what's underneath, get a true picture. So then we started, again, this is from last year, we saw the news come out talking about all this funding that, um, districts were going to get. And indeed, when we got our legislative budget, uh, we were in a very good position compared to what the executive's budget was earlier in the cycle. So I'm going to pass forward now, this, this goes back about three weeks with our new governor. Uh, again, I, I, I categorized this as being cautiously optimistic because, uh, there's a pledge to continue. One of the conversations last year was a commitment, finally a commitment to fully fund what's called the Foundation A formula. And that's the major driver of our state aid. Uh, the governor has made that commitment. But then again, we have to rewind back to the prior year. Right after all of that funding and the state aid was released, the controller's office issued this report. This is from last year, that expressed some caution about the sustainability of the aid package that was paid. So you can tell just from those last few slides, great news, maybe not so good news. Great news, maybe not so good news. We have to plan a budget that allows us to do everything that we talked about doing, all of the goals, all of the priorities that the board has established, all of the initiatives that are in place to make sure that we can sustain that regardless of what the outside world, outside financial position, uh, wants, uh, back to schools. So that is basically the overview. If there's any questions, I think I need to try and answer. Otherwise, Mr. Ramirez is just going to do a tap dance.
There's a really good lot of questions, so Mr. Ramirez.
Yeah, we're going to save Mr. Ramirez from having to, uh, to us. I have a very basic question. When you start the process and you go to, let's say, individual building, is it, do you start from zero? Do you start, is it based on last year's expenditures? Um, how, where do you begin? And is it the building principal, for instance, who puts together the budget? I mean, I understand about contractual obligations. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about things like purchases for bill.
Right. So, so the reality is, so the, the reference is zero-based budgeting. Basically.
Yes.
You start into the new year, you wipe everything clean and okay, what would be needed? In, in public education, I, I will say, I believe that's kind of a fallacy because there are inherent costs in running the operation that you can't just say, okay, let's take those off the table and start again because the first thing you put back on are fundamental costs that you need. So it's a little bit of a combination of both. We look at basically what our quote-unquote rollover would be, which is what do we know as concrete given? We have contractual obligation, we know that comes into the new year, we have to fund it. We have pension costs, health insurance costs, um, you know, a whole host of very, I, I don't want to say predictable, but known factors for coming into the next year. So we have to make sure those are funded. And then the conversations are very open after that. Part of the conversation is shaped like, okay, if you did have a clean slate, what would you change? If you want to add this, what, you have to do some analysis back in your department or your building to say what's really not working. So that we're not just adding, but we're going to evaluate, is that really producing the results we anticipated? It's worth the investment that's being made. And then make a decision, do we reinvest that money and try and yield a better result? Or do we double down on that, so to speak?
You don't say things like, uh, two percent. Uh, you're going to keep it up to two percent and, and you have that ongoing, right?
So, so the real answer to that is the outside economy is already dictating what that's going to look like before it ever gets to, I'll say, internal conversation. So to be pragmatic about the question, i- is that a rock-solid limitation? No. Is it something that we would automatically go in and have somebody come to a budget meeting and say, okay, I want to make all these changes and it's going to be an eight percent increase? Well, the first question I know I have to ask is where's that coming from? So, so that's why I go back to, it's a little bit of a combination of both. When we started the budget process last year, there were some severe limitations. The forecast was dim. So conversation like, okay, we have to go into this thinking, you know, don't come to the table with wish lists, but let's understand where the money is being spent and what it's, what the yield is. And then we'll take it from there. So it, it's a quasi, a little bit of based on market conditions.
I just want to add something, um, so what we're trying to do, what we need with the principals and the director and everybody else who does budget vote is to say, so these are the goals of our instructional program. What do you need to maintain and advance the program? And that's where we start. Um, depending upon what happens at state level and all those other factors that we can't control, um, that ultimately determines what makes it into the budget and what does not make it into the budget. And certain departments, so Mr. Ramirez's department, for example, um, they have a schedule of rotating, um, placements. So when we look at uniforms and we look at equipment and all of that, he has a schedule. If animals are being rotated in a bad year, that gets dropped. Um, you know, you know, in a better year, we might advance something, um, to that year. But it really is literally line by line, need by need is discussed between district office and, um, and any department head or building principal.
So Ms. Robinson has a question, I believe. And speaking of our answering this, so, this question, you mentioned something about contractual costs, pensions, salaries, and stuff, knowing that, you know, every year we have to deal with that. Um, and slides from the board showed, the chart shows that about seventy-five percent of our budget goes to that. Can you speak to the fact that, I mean, is that typical for a district or a district powerhouse? I mean, that is not roughly what other districts have been.
Uh, yes, absolutely. The, the range, I would say, just on a statistical basis, is between probably seventy-five and eighty percent is in those, I'll say, very fixed costs.
And I guess what kind of stands out to me, I, in doing the budget over the years, in time, as we've talked about, actually kind of areas, but most businesses, that, correct? A lot of businesses, that's their primary cost in terms of the, the pensions, the, the boycott. And does that, I just kind of bother a lot for businesses in the first step.
Yeah, I, well.
I bet not the last business.
Yeah. I, I think the context that I put that in is, um, public education is a people business.
Right.
So we're not making widgets, as they use the phrase. Uh, so the concentration of your costs are going to be on what you need to implement programmatical, uh, content.
And so not only education, but other businesses that are kind of set up like, uh, spent back. Thank you.
Um, you mentioned, uh, increases in tuition costs, what do you mean?
Uh, so for example, uh, uh, a private placement, it could be a charter school. We've seen an increase in that. We've had a, uh, a school that closed, a former school that closed. And we've had some students, uh, basically, uh, call it distribution to different schools. And some of that is impacted in that as well.
Thank you, thank you. So, I, I just, if you could explain, this is, oh, may you mention, you know, these two percent. Um, there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of understanding about the two percent tax gap there that we like to talk about. Can you just speak briefly to what that really is?
Sure. So, uh, in the tax cap legislation, which was established in two thousand and twelve, uh, there's a very, I'll call it complicated formula of inclusions and exclusions. As we go through that formula, the outcome of each individual school district, uh, is not necessarily going to be two percent. So prior to the tax cap, there used to be a, uh, four percent increase or a hundred and twenty percent of CPI, whichever is less. And that went out the window when the tax cap was implemented. So we follow this formula. Uh, the formula is consistent for every school district, but some years, again, depending, one of the major drivers in that formula is CPI. So there were, uh, a few years, I'll say in the, uh, probably four or five years ago, where CPI was very, very low. So we saw numbers in terms of a quote-unquote tax cap number that were less than one percent. That was still part of the tax cap legislation. So based on that calculation, CPI being part of that, uh, the numbers were very low. Right now, CPI is tracking a lot higher. So we're not going to make a prediction on what that's going to be for the end of the year. Um, it remains to be seen, but there's a lot of external factors that go into that formula that actually determine what each individual school's tax cap will be.
So that two percent or whatever, whatever version of that two percent is just one variable in a very complicated formula. What comes out the other end of the formula is really what tax that did to the school that, that I heard.
Correct, yeah, hundred percent.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Good, okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson, very wonderful. So now we move on to the comments and the words from the board of education. And I would like to start with Mr. Smith, who's, um, just pointing to us, the board of this year, um, New York State School Convention, which was virtual. But, um, every year, you mentioned this in the business meeting. But, um, every year's convention is in a business meeting. And, um, Mr. Smith represented us at that business meeting. Do you have anything to say?
Um, yes, so for folks who aren't familiar, uh, New York State has a school board association, which is very much like PTA's, New York State is here. So, uh, the same way that a lot of us have gone up, I assume the approach has gone differently. PTA protection, but they're all presented with. Um, uh, New York State has the same thing for school board trustees. Um, and, and part of what's really good about it is to get new people, as I guess I'd say, to meet folks from around the state and getting to know them, to learn that things are really different in other parts of this gigantic state of it. But, um, so the business meeting is something that happens, um, is it, I think it's always gonna be good. Last time, it was at the end, because it's all virtual, that was, uh, that was a Sunday thing. Um, so that was a four-hour Zoom. I've never been on a four-hour Zoom before. But, but it was interesting because we had different people around the state who, um, certain districts where they feel very strongly about these, you know, recommendations we're gonna put forth as, as a state body of, of school board members, you know, of, of school boards. And, um, you know, there were some questions about, uh, virtual meetings and the old meetings law. You know, during the pandemic, you all were allowed to have virtual meetings. And, and in most cases, you weren't supposed to have in-person meetings. Um, and then now we can have in-person meetings, but we can also have virtual meetings. And we're actually doing both right now. Um, thanks for that little laptop back there. Um, folks who do wanna stay home and watch the meeting, I'm assuming you do that here. So that was just, you know, one of the, uh, the, the positions that were put forth. Was talking about changing that. It's interesting to hear people upstate say, listen, you know, it's, it's all well and good for you all in the asshole economy. We have great internet to have these Zoom meetings all the time. But, you know, we had a lot of people who couldn't attend our meetings because we live in, you know, I can't even tell you the names of some of these places where they don't have such great infrastructure and they don't have great internet. And so whereas some of us downstate were pushing for, you know, give us more rights to have virtual meetings just to make life easier, they were saying, you know, A, that's not easy for us. And B, we want to, um, you know, have, have, they were, they were reminding us all of the, um, you know, the interaction of, you know, there's definitely more interaction at a meeting like this than, than what we could do. So that was just one of the many, um, uh, policies that, you know, got, got discussed and voted on. And, um, so the meeting comes out with a, a whole bunch of recommendations that our roller group, the New York State School Board Association, um, will be lobbying over uh, on behalf of us and on behalf of you all. So, um, uh, another thing that we were pushing for, and hopefully this will happen, we advocated, um, that the state abolished this, uh, building level expense reporting, which my campus friends, uh, know is a big bear. And, um, that was pretty much unanimous. The people said, that was a nice idea, but it's, it's not really, it has unintended consequences and tons of extra work for you folks. And, um, New York State School Board Association will be advocating for that to be abolished. And, uh, so we'll push our fingers to the ground. Um, but overall, it was just, uh, it was a very good experience, um, to, to be able to see, you know, what are folks in different school districts around the state thinking? So, um, yeah, that is, uh, that was a fun thing about that. Thanks.
There's a follow-up on the four hours.
Mr. Smith, was there any pushback at any of the recommended resolutions?
Um.
They were pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, no, not much. I, I will, uh, check in my notes though.
Okay.
So I can fill in my own stuff, but.
Thank you. I would just like to quickly remind everybody, if you have a comment or a question, be sure to fill out one of the cards in the back, um, because we are almost to that section.
Yes, we were. Last week, you have anything? I don't.
So we had a half-day meeting on, uh, COVID-19 course. It was a nice quick one. Um, this year, Randy has, okay, we can wait it up to the end of the district construction project. We also spoke, um, quickly about what was happening in respect to, um, COVID. We talked about the building conditions, sort of things coming up next year. Then also how we can shoot on COVID, just to see if that's also what's happening in the work of. And that was pretty much it. I mean, it was quick, easy, fast, wonderful.
Mr. Building, yes? Okay, I, um, attended a virtually course, the, some of the workshops that were presented at the, um, state school board convention. And a couple of them were actually very good. Um, there was one that was presented by, uh, a woman who was professor of education at Rand University on addressing academic learning loss. And that is a big topic of conversation for districts, or like states or the old country. And she was giving information about targeted and target, I guess, targeted tutoring. It was, it was really very good. She, what I like to hear at the workshop is specifics, uh, specific things that you can do, specific things, places you can go, websites you can work with, so that you come away with, uh, with something that you really could implement if you wanted to. And the other really excellent one was, um, by, uh, a gentleman who was executive director of a, a health and wellness, uh, company. And he did a presentation on wellness and especially as related to, uh, students after the pandemic. And was, again, gave very specific, uh, things that could be done. And also gave a lot of references that, uh, people could, could go to to get some help. So there were a couple of very useful things. They did a less useful one on, um, open meetings, uh, law, oh, not laws, I should say, guidance. And it wasn't anything, I think, most of us didn't already know. Um, so that was, that was good. And then I, um, I just wanna give a shout-out, uh, to the council of PTA's for their sponsoring the legislative forum. Um, from what I understand, you got a great turnout. Uh, one thing about virtual is that people can go and, you know, so it was really a good turnout. And it was a turnout from legislators as well. So it's a huge effort and, um, I still feel, I think it was really one good opportunity for everybody to get, like, some of the resources that we have. Um, and I have usual meetings that I have been to, um, aside from that, this, this month. Um, we did inform educational financing committees today, um, as well as, uh, the Long Island Education Coalition that this morning. Uh, that's a coalition that consists of educators, whether they're business officials or superintendents. There's usually representatives from PTA. And then, um, I represent school boards and then the co-chair represents ICID. So we have very good conversations. And because they are, uh, a relatively small group, we are able to be pretty frank. So it's, it's a nice way to have those conversations. And I guess that's it. We had, um, a work session and everyone that was present, of course, will let someone else talk about that. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I do have a report. Um, one thing that myself, as a candidate, and with schools, um, participated in was attending a school in Cambridge, Massachusetts called Newville. So part of us looking to be innovative. Um, the, actually, it's in the school that had completely different concepts called Newville. They were founded about 2010 and it was a different type of learning where rather than having teachers, they have all coaches. They have made about 45 students, uh, and it's, uh, experiments, seminars that talk about like experiments, learning, like sessions with one aspect and another piece was studios where they're focusing on a specific, um, subject, more around engineering and architectural design. School, uh, there were about 45 students there. And it was great to just do this, get self-referent learning open concept, um, school. Very small, but different in terms of how the students were learning. And, um, we're always trying to figure out different ways to make our district, uh, different, for the fact that we have Kami, we talked about, um, cap zones or different ways that we can implement how other schools do different things compared to our schools. So that was really the purpose was to learn and see how other schools are doing different forms of learning and find ways to say, well, this, this is something that we can incorporate in our school. Um, but great for me as a board member, the tendency to say, wow, we're already, as I began by certain things that we're already doing in terms of, um, I remember two years ago participating in Walton Springs here at a seminar and just hearing how these students were talking about different topics. But things like that, I feel that we're, we're there in different ways, but always an opportunity to learn. I know most schools do the other thing else, but for me, that was great to see. Students are students, ages, create stuff in the book.
It really was a very interesting experience, um, something very non-conventional. And, um, you know, we are very lucky in this district because our focus is on innovation, things that are non-conventional and really looking toward the future and what the future of education is gonna look like. Because it's not gonna be anything like what we're used to. And it's just great to know that we are seeking out this information and we are already trying to implement things like that when we can. But this program is really, really different. And, um, I mean, there was a, a whole shop of machinery where after they, um, would have their academic part of the lessons, they would then move into the project portion. And for two weeks or three weeks, they would just work on their project, which would involve using this machinery and constructing things. Uh, they, they gave us one example where, um, the, the kids wanted to invent something, do help somebody with back problems, um, get up from the chair. And they actually created a device. So it, it was really just amazing to see and I was very grateful for the opportunity. And I too would like to thank the council of PTA for hosting the legislative forum. I was able to attend. It was very interesting and it was nice to see that you had a great turnout. So I thank you.
That's, that's important, yes? So now we're going to move into questions and comments section. But collecting the words. The public participation component of Walton Board meetings is limited to residents, business owners, or employees of the Walton School District and is limited to 30 minutes and a maximum of 30 minutes per person. We cannot comment on issues of personnel or individual students. In an effort to ensure a respectful environment, we ask that you write your question or comment on the form located at the back of the room, which is being collected. We'll call you up to the microphone to ask your question or share your comments. If we cannot answer your question quickly, simply, and accurately, we will get back to you with the information that you are seeking. As always, we thank you for your respectful comments and questions. Marie Feely, would you like to start this one?
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, Marie Feely. And I just wanted to, um, speak this evening because unfortunately I was unexpectedly not able to be in person with you last month, but I was attending virtually um, because I was responsible for bringing in comments to the Walton Middle School community um, related to concerns of the athletic fields. I would like to say, and for those of you who do know me on the board, um, my intention is not to cause a problem. My intention is not to be seen as a problem. And I heard, I, I perceive that my, my intention to try to gather information from the middle school community, um, was perceived as a problem. So I just, I wanted to say publicly that that was by no means my intention. Um, it came from a place of frustration, um, attending home games, which, um, my son was part of the, was part of the football, uh, team this year. It was an incredible experience. But sitting in the stand and listening to the parents of our team talking about, uh, you know, the conditions of the field, uh, in regards to role posts specifically. Um, and I said, guys, we can't just talk about it. We have to, you have to, you know, we have to do something in order to let people know that it's a concern. So I got the planning's recommendation. I did reach out to Miss Randy. That was what I have done in the past and was always met with a welcomed response and a very productive conversation. I was very pleased. I told Mr. Adazo to see the soccer goals in place, um, following last month's meeting. So that is very much appreciated. And he did further explain about the goal posts that Dr. Kami had explained to me, uh, had explained to all of us. I was very relieved. Um, my, my request to the board is that maybe we can look at these things more proactively in the future so that the murmuring doesn't have to go on. We go to several other communities and see very different, uh, facilities. And it, and then come back and, and people are excited and talk amongst themselves. And I don't think that's the way to get things done. So I really just wanted to, to bring that, um, here to explain myself, especially since I was very frustrated that I couldn't be here at class much to do that. Um, and then just one other question I do have is that moving forward, I feel like it's been mentioned often that the bond did not pass. And I expected that that would be a difficult task during a pandemic and at such a large front. Um, so I'm just wondering what the budgeting concept is or the planning for addressing the needs of our building facilities, um, without being able to pass a bond. I mean, yearly, there are things that are done to improve our facility. How do we prioritize what we need, um, to make sure that things are still getting done? Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that we very much appreciate your involvement. We are very thankful to have you in our team again. You certainly would not see me if any kind of problem any year, I'm sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, as far as the second part of your question, um, I would just like to say, if I could, um, it's, things are being worked on and more to come. Let's talk to him and take it a little further. I was just, just gonna quickly say something, Marie, that you will be pleased to know that you were, I didn't know specifically that, that raised the issue, but we certainly heard. We did have a board work session. Um, and that was a concern that was brought. We did have a conversation about it. I'm not saying that there, you know, it's gonna be an instant fix, but you, you were heard. Your comments were heard because that came before us. A couple of people brought it up. It's a good question.
It's appreciative that they heard what you said. So I, I thought it was cool. But, um, in particular, I wanna thank you for what you said. Um, that, you know, one of the things that I said at the last board meeting, which I, I believe in my heart, is that there's no one here that doesn't want to be helpful. There's no one here that doesn't want to work for the community. Um, and it's just a, but one better form of communication to just ask. Um, I, you know, it's funny, you know, on Thanksgiving, we do, what are we thankful for? And I'm gonna tell you, I am thankful that I am not on social media. Um, and, and I would never be on social media. I have, you know, there's like a S and A, social media anonymous, you know? I would be the pitcher child for that. Um, I, I, I think that your, your question is actually very timely because in the budget presentation, if you see the way that eye is sliced, um, there is, there is little room for big projects, right? Um, because we're a service organization, we're about 75% salaries. That's just the way it starts. And, and, um, this is, we, whoa, is, um, is exactly right. If you look in, in industry, industries that are service organizations are in about the same ratio, right? They're, they're a people organization. When we go through the budget process and we're looking for, you know, money for facilities, we start with the things that we need to always do and then we look for the next project stuff. So for example, we're, we're almost to completion, almost to completion of an elevator at the Plaza School. That was a multi-million dollar project. The way we were able to fund that was through a capital reserve. So in years that we're able to understand the budget and take that money and put it in a capital reserve. Then we put that vote to the, to the community and we say, this is what we'd like to spend the money on. We ask the community to vote. And so they go, yes, on the Plaza elevator. Steel School is the next school to get an elevator. We're already starting the process of going out to bid and doing that kind of stuff. So that sort of next summer, we'll be able to put an elevator at Steel School. And those two are prioritized because there are, there are issues with ADA compliance, right? We want to make sure that every time a student breaks a leg or it seems to happen all the time, that there is accessibility for anybody with disability. Things like roofs and fields are multi-million dollar projects. And I think what's important to note about that, you know, I would have fixed my, my roof on my home. Actually, that's a new recently. It was like a $19,000 bill, right? It was just like enormous for an individual person. But in a school district, that's a million dollars. And in a budget that is very tight to begin with, that 2% tax cap, which in years past, it hasn't even been 2%, right? There was one year it was in the negative. It, it becomes almost impossible to, to put things for facilities that are in numbers that are that large. And so we can do projects at a time, but to be honest with you, to do all the projects that we know we need, all of the bathrooms, which we did do some bathrooms at the high school because goodness, you know, we had to. But the locker rooms at the high school, the other bathrooms throughout the district, I mean, we make a joke in the district office when we do professional development and we have people from the outside coming in and hope you have strong knees because it's, you know, if you want to go to the bathroom, you're going to need strong knees, but they're baby bathrooms. It's a lot of money. It's not a little amount of money. And then there are people that, you know, when we put up the bond last time, you know, sort of lynched at the number. That really was just a portion of the work that we have to do. And it's not out of a lack of wanting to do the work because those numbers, this is work for us, right? But it's the right thing to do for our athletes. It's the right thing to do for our kids. I wish there was, I wish New York State had a different way of funding that. I can tell you that the board and myself were kind of fighting already up in New York State because that, we believe that the portion of money that we get back in, in building aid is not high enough. It's disproportionate to Upstate and our buildings are older than the buildings of Upstate. And so we're fighting that battle also. I wish there were a better way, but in the budget, there are projects and there's maintenance. And beyond that, there's not really much else that we can, that we can put in there. I do also want to address, you know, Mr. Reiers and I sat down and Mr. Anadso, Mr. Reiers and I sat down. And we looked at the athletic field, what are the regular maintenance that we can do to make sure, for example, that we maximize the life of the goalposts? And so we have a plan in place to make sure that we can do some of that work. But those are smaller projects also, but we did, we did contribute and we hurt everybody. And we don't disagree. Our literally might have been different, but we don't disagree. So we are moving at it, focused on it, but it would be disingenuous of me if I didn't share that for those larger projects, there is virtually no other way of doing that other than building bonds. And that bond for us just represents work, but it's the right thing to do for our kids. Thank you. Next, Alisa Kirshner.
Let me just preface by saying I would pay three times the annual school taxes for a wonderful education. And by the way, my children are doing and getting at this district is wonderful. So I do appreciate that. I do appreciate it all the time, especially since I have voted for each and every one of you at one time or another and agree to each bond and budget vote. I guess I also have to say that when I ask questions, it is from me, a parent or concerned citizen and community member. So I do not need people calling presidents of other organizations that I am on to be a part of because I'm allowed to simply ask questions. With that being said, I am not wishing for big ticket items such as central air conditioning in the high school because anyone that could simply balance a checkbook can simply know that that is unfeasible for maybe six weeks of the year. However, there are murmurs going around, like the previous person said, and I can't excuse her transparental about things going on, such as an electric car that I've purchased. If it's true, please explain the cost and when was that approved along with the charging station? And who is able to use it and who is paying for it if other cars, electric cars aren't able to? And especially when academies for the eighth graders were cut out of budget or for some reason it's no more than last year. Other things I do believe we would love to see the money used on are offering and paying for PSATs as part of the year, every year for each student during the school day. So they will be ready for when SATs come. Fixing the fields and playing and practice field because children are actually getting hurt during practice because of it. A library at the high school that students can actually use, more interactive classrooms, other places to eat, lunches at the high school, green spaces, picnic tables for the children. I truly think Walton is a great community. However, we depend better and so that, why wouldn't we? I do appreciate your comment and I wait with respect. Thank you so much.
So I'm going to respond to, you know, what I, I think I can, as I said, quickly and accurately. And anything maybe that I don't get to, we will get you the information. So as far as things like fields and green spaces and more places for kids to eat, again, coming back to all of those things were addressed and were in the plans for the bond that was put up. And, and as Dr. Kami just explained and has explained many times, that unfortunately is the only way to do big projects like that. So we, we, we all want these things very much also. But that is the only way to do it. The library at the high school, as I understand it, has been legally gutted and is being completely redone as we speak. So that was something that they were able to find a way to do and we are excited to see the end result of that.
So the, it's taken from sometime in the late summer to a few weeks ago, it's all been, it's all been designed. The purchase orders were out. We're told that we're full, that it's between 12 and 14 weeks once the purchase orders are received. I'm going to, I, I, I don't believe it'll be 12 to 14 days. I think it'll be longer than that because, I mean, if you don't know that the school containers go in and see and then the drivers that can't deliver it. But it is all designed and we're just waiting for that. My, honestly, my hope is that start of the school year, it'll, it'll be done. It'll be beautiful. It'll be for our students and for our tutors. I want to say 21st century, but it'll be even better than 21st century. Starting this year, next year. Yeah. Again, it's, it's out of our hands at this point. Everything that we can do, we've done. We're in a process right now, things that we're doing on our own, we're doing the floors on our own, we're doing the teaching on our own. The lighting stuff is in the process of being done. None of that is really an issue. The issue is just receiving everything. Once it's received, you know, if I'm hopeful, I'm hoping that everything's received by February break and that if it gets a bath in February, it'll be done. When I'm disappointed by that, then I'm going to hope that after April break, it all comes in and it's ready to go. And I think it's safe to say that by next school year, it'll definitely be done, but there's so many things that are out of control that I just don't know. But it, it's a long, arduous process and it, it is out of our hands. At this point, we're waiting. And I think the other thing that's important to share about that is the cost of that is being covered by the money that we were allocated in federal funds for increased space, social distancing and all of that. So the renovation of the library is being fully funded through federal money, not tax paper money.
Okay, then just one last item that you had asked about. As far as an electric car, a hybrid car, which I believe operates mainly on gas, but has the potential to also switch over to electric, was purchased by the district for district use. Yes, the superintendent can use it, but it is for district use. As a matter of fact, that was what we used to go to the school that we spoke about before. It, it was always common practice and to have a district vehicle. And we had the same district vehicle at one time, I think for over 25 years. So, you know, of course things age out and so, so yes, that was recently acquired. It is my understanding, I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, that it does not require a charging station that has to be purchased. You can apparently just use an adapter and two, two 10 volt and plug it in. So the expense of a charging station was not needed. Please, I, I know I was probably not explaining.
You got to rewrite your point, twist it and post it on social media. So, so electric vehicles can be charged with a regular one from outlet like we have in our homes. It takes, it charges about three miles an hour. And I know that because I own an electric vehicle. So when I go home tonight, I will plug my car into my regular outlet and by sometime 18 hours later, it will be fully charged. Mine is fully electric. So if it's not charged, it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't have the gas option to flip over. So if I get stuck on highway, I'm thoroughly stuck on highway. The car that was purchased for the district is hybrid so that it is electric and gas. And so when we went to Key Bridge, we would not have needed to keep it in that because it's about 47 miles on electric. What the district did was they installed a two, is it two 10 or two 20, Ross two 10, right?
Two 20.
Two 20 volt so that it can fully charge in four hours. And it's not a charging station. It's just, it's just a little box that has a two 20 outlet in it. And so as far as, I'm the only other person driving an electric vehicle and I say this for all you on social media. I go, I keep plugging my car into that outlet, which is fine. And that's what I think a lot of the murmur is, especially with the year and after COVID and people not coming or like just listening. So I don't know if there's, obviously you guys are always a little old. But maybe to make it more, like a question and answer kind of thing, just before these kind of things arise and then it swoops around town or through the middle school. This, I mean, we've been trying to fix, I have three boards, but certainly those will be the trying to fix this. But it's like one of those things. So maybe to come up with some kind of solution to stop the murmurs of, hey, look, you're in a mess. Let's make a, I know you're next on social media, but I'm just saying, I'm not so mad against it. No, no, most people just be wanting and they need things up and then if it comes to a whole new thing and. And people start saying nasty things about other people and. But just maybe like a, here's the board that, you know, or something like a once a week factoid about the whole, like for the library. Say, hey, we're working strong on the library because it's a bunch of kids coming home. And what you hear from the children coming home, it's a barren library that they've been used or due for projects at. And with the library, the Baldwin library hours are so ridiculous. We're having to use other district libraries. So you know what I'm saying? So it's more of that, you know, just to feel it to the fun of it. And I would just offer. Because I appreciate it. Yeah. And I would just offer, I mean, you know, when I, when I came to the districts, the first letter that I sent to everybody is that, you know, my tent is open. And I do mean that, you know, I will always give you an answer. It may not be the answer that you like. I mean, I'm not going to lie about that because I can't please everybody all the time, but I will always answer the question. So whether it's me or Ross or anybody else, you know, any question that you got, because it's hard to anticipate what that question might be. I mean, to be honest with you, one of the things that I think we all thought is that, you know, purchasing a hybrid vehicle was a step in the right direction, right? It was, I mean, it's personal narrative. So it was actually shocking and it would have been impossible to anticipate. It's hard to know where that started. You know, it started from a place that was not, not positive, right? Because I think that, that something said positively is not going to respond negatively, but something said negatively will just get out of people. It's hard to know when, when that's being said, right? And so I guess I just, you know, and I said it before, I know the PTA knows this because I said it to them too, that it's so much better to just ask the question. And I know that there's always people out there that are going to say things to start things. But I just hope that as a community, we just, we just stop that. I will tell you that one of the, and this is a little, you know, and they'll, I'm sure they're all looking at me going like, oh, sorry, you know. But I'm going to say that one of the frustrations we're, the serious frustration we're having this year, we, all of us, is that our kids from kindergarten all the way to grade twelve, they're on social media. They're on TikTok. They're on all these things. They can't even begin to tell you issues that we're dealing with because our kids are on social media. We can't, I mean, every day is another adventure. Finding out that a first grader had their TikTok taken away because they just made, and all of us were saying, oh, first grader is on TikTok. I've said it to the PTA. I've said it at board meetings, especially for our kids. If they're off social media, it is not helping. It's making things possible. And then helping, you know. You know, when I knew all this stuff was going on social media, I said, I want to know. I want to know. I want to get a sleep at night because people think that maybe you can say things about people and you can talk about things. You know, there's people inside of all those and it's hurtful. And when people are working every day, all day for the good of our kids and everywhere, you know, we're dealing with kids that are just, you know, they're in spaces they shouldn't be. And people are talking about you and saying nasty things about you and all that stuff. Oh, God, you know. So just ask. That's all I think. Like no, no, I charge, just say, seriously, I mean that, I'm on my part. If you have a husband, honestly, just ask. I can answer whoever goes there. I can answer. I just, you know, I said the last word to you, but you're not doing this. It's a waste of everybody's energy and it's hurtful. It really is hurtful. And you're calling and finding, you know, whatever question.
And I know what I need to do, of course, to pick you back up, but Dr. Kami, I, I used to be on social media, I was young with the ballroom crews. And I would see things, especially when I was a person of war. And I was like, yeah. Don't stay, don't have conversations. But if you really care about the answers, don't make it up. Or drop a link out to the people who have the answers and get the answers.
Can I just ask a follow up to that? It's, it's really relevant. It's just, and Mrs. Coles, I just offer a follow up to that. I, I think, I appreciate that.
We're not supposed to do this, but just quickly, because I think we're on the.
I, I think it's important for all of us because if, if one person calls, and I've had this conversation with my friend out, that if one person calls and makes that phone call and gets the answer, then it's not my job to, you know, disseminate the information. And I think that's where we're asking the community, for the district, to take a more proactive role in disseminating that information when someone does call with a, a logical, legitimate question, you know? So that then, then it goes out, so it's not from, you know, my mouth to her ear, to her, to his, and that's where things will get confused again. So I just, I think it's important for all of us to keep that in mind, that let's, help us feel comfortable calling to ask that question, knowing that then it's going to be shared with the community as a whole.
I can't say no, you can. So I, I, I don't disagree with you, I agree with you. The question comes at half, right? Because here's what I know, I know that you can never exceed a social media, right? I know that, we, we find that out hard time. But what we don't want to do, honestly, is for example, post it to one of the school district's social media pages, because then what happens on those other pages starts to happen on the school's page, and that's not what we want our school's pages to do. So I, I hear you, and I, I don't disagree with you, I agree with you. The question is half, so I'm happy, for example, to take like a portion of the Walden beat and do like, you know, things we've heard from the community, but that would take like three months, and that is not going to slow down social media, so I.
But it's a step in the right direction. It's just a step in the right direction.
Happy to do that, happy to do that. You know, it would be helpful to know what are those questions? So we're going to put the library question as a, as a perfect thing to put in the next Walden beat so that it answers those questions, and the Walden beat goes to every home and community, so that kind of satisfies that. I, for example, wouldn't have a problem with, in a Blackboard connect mess, and that's only going to the people that have kids in school unless they've signed up to get our correspondence. So I don't think that it would solve some of the social media stuff, or what about the, the.
We still try to send a call.
It goes to you guys, it doesn't go to you, because the Blackboard connect, it has a list of emails, and if you're, if you're in an community and you're not in a physical, you can, you can certainly sign up, because it would not be a happy day for all the families who people don't. So it's not, it's not a lack of wanting to, it's, it's really a procedural issue, but I, but I, I have, I think it's a good idea to like take the library question, and even with the athletics thing, put that in a section of the Walden.
Held on October 13th, 2021, as detailed in Friday mailing. Filled on, moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Ed, it's not, the Board of Education, I'm sorry, acknowledges receipt of the treasurer's report since September.
Report published through the portal for the first marketing period of November 17th, the high school. Our musical production, which I cannot wait to see, already is set to premiere, Friday, November 19th, at the high school, in person limited, against Saturday, November 20th, at the high school, 2:00 PM and 7:30 PM, in person, limited tickets. Second Thanksgiving, I did that Tuesday, November 23rd, that's in person, of course, the musical production is in person, and all those other meetings are still virtual. And district will be closed for Thanksgiving, 25th and the 26th, and the community, Coalition of Walden, is meeting December 1st. Report cards came through five, and there are teacher conferences Thursday, December 3rd, Friday, December 4th, elementary schools closed Friday, December 4th, and our next Board of Education meeting Wednesday, December 8th, 8:00 PM at night school. Thank you very much, I'm glad you're recording this, and safe. You're welcome. And now I'm going to close the meeting. Can I get a motion? So, with my, this is three, second, but.
I'm on my way.
This actually is a very, those.
I would like to introduce tonight, Mr. Allen, who is going to present on.